Oshino from Lagos. I would therefore pray here in the audience to observe a ministerial in his honor and I would also, as you must know, ask that we are here. We are here for stakeholders' meeting on the bill to establish the Nigerian Army University Bill 2020 that I sponsored for the establishment of the Nigerian Army University. It is the normal process or procedure in the African Bill for it to be referred to committee and the committee is expected to hold a public hearing to have input from the outside that will shape, amend or introduce new things that are missing from the original bill. I am sure by now that they are they are built on copies of the proposed bill. As you are also aware, the university, the Nigerian Army University was established by the approval of the Federal Executive Council I think sometime in nineteen twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen thereafter. And as the law or the Constitution requires, an institution like that must be backed by law or act of national assembly. And this is not the first time an institution is established before the formalities. And this is more of formalities that we are supposed to do. Because of the time constraint and also the pandemic that has locked down the whole world. And up to now, we are still living in fear. You can see all of us wearing masks, trying to prevent ourselves from being seen and unknown, which is ravaging the country and the number keeps going up. So because of two reasons. One is the pandemic itself and two, the fact that this is more of a formality. And also, three, because as I said, politics is all about interest and this is my interest. So I would pray the indulgence of the invited guests or those out there to fully support this bill that I sponsor and sponsored. And it's the university that will have which carries, that will have in southern Gornou for the first time. Gornou has, as I said now, two universities, one state and the other federal. We have Polytechnic, we have College of Education, we have all sorts of schools, high institutions in Gornou State. But all that is centered in Gornou section. The North doesn't have any high institution. In fact, we are better than them because we have one college of education in Watapu. So I don't think it should be out of place for me to start by craving and indulgence to support this bill just as my colleagues in the Senate when it went for the second reading unanimously supported the bill. Apart from that, we all know that we need specialty institutions to cater for special needs, especially in Nigeria and in its context. We need Nigerian University. And I want to commend all those that contributed in making sure that that institution is established. I want to also inform our invited guests that the university is fully operational with accredited programs and metropolitarian students for the first and the second year now. Also, the university, as I said, is fully established in terms of structure, accommodation and facilities for learning. We are ready to go. The only thing that is on our way now is the law that is required. I want to also use this opportunity to appeal to the Nigerian University Commission that has been gracious in cooperating with the National Assembly, the Nigerian Army for the establishment of this university. There are courses that need to be accredited. I hope that that will be done as soon as possible. I would also pray the indulgence and appeal to other interesting institutions or civil society because they are presented and other non-governmental agencies to support this university in whatever way so that it will come up to the level that we so desire. Having said that, as I said, we are doing this more or less formally and we will appreciate as we process the bill any input, correction, ideas that can make it much, much better. Finally, I want to thank everybody because I will not have the chance to come over here again and make contribution except that I will be presiding over this. I want to close my remarks by specifically mentioning my brother, the co-host, for the effort that you made in order to have this university seated in our soul. I know the processes or how far you have gone or what you did, the blackmail, the opposition and everything, despite that you will be able to stand up and we have the support that we needed. Because as I said, ladies and gentlemen, actually, Gornou South, if you know Gornou South, we need not only Nigerian Army University, I think we need Armed Forces University. But since we have Nigerian Army only, we thank God. And I want to commend you and for standing up to it and helping us to realize this bill. Your name, whatever your name, will be remembered by not only us in southern Gornou, but the country as a whole because this is the first time we are going to have a Nigerian Army university. We thank you very much for that effort and we pray that Almighty Allah will reward you for doing what will remain indelible in our minds. And I also want to use the opportunity to thank the Honorable Minister, even though he is not around, Adamu Adamu Yaa, Adamu, I call him Yaa Adamu because his junior brother is a very good friend of mine. We grew up together, we schooled together for the support he gave us in the establishment of this university. I want to close by asking one of the elders of the Senate, they are just walking, with all due respect, we call him because he has been here for a long time. He is supposed to retire, but he refused. He is now for twenty something years. His manager, with all due respect, I meet him maybe someday. I will allow the name entrance of our colleagues and the one and only we call him.
Thanks to be here, along with some principal staff officers for the Army headquarters. The Chairman, Senate Committee on the Nigerian Army, distinguished Senator Alin Dugan, our brother, is also a candidate and has met many of his remarks. The Vice-Chairman, Senate Committee on Nigerian Army, other distinguished members of the Senate Committee on the Nigerian Army, the Honorable Minister of Defence, they are heavily represented. The Executive Secretary, National University Commission, they are also heavily represented. The Vice-Chancellor of Nigerian Army University, other members of the Nigerian Army University Bill, Lord Nkaku, they are present. Members of the Civil Society of Ngunnabung, they are present. Members of the press, ladies and gentlemen. Let me, to behalf of my humble self and the Nigerian Army, commensurate with this distinguished senator on the person of this Senator, Oshino. May this be our lesson, perfect peace. Today, much late, another great day in the development of the Nigerian Army University Bill. Let me start by appreciating the contributions of the Senate for passing the bill through the First and Second Readings, especially the Chairman, Senate Committee on the Nigerian Army, distinguished Senator Alin Dugan, who sponsored the bill and heavily supported by these distinguished members. Equally, I appreciate the Honorable Minister of Education, the Honorable Minister of Defence, the National University Commission and all other friends and all wishes of the Nigerian Army University Bill for whom the university's talking reflects their legacy and passion for education in Nigeria. Distinguished gentlemen, the Nigerian Army University Bill was conceived as one of the intellectual arms of Nigerian Army in order to bring cutting-edge knowledge and address the increasing need for specialized training and research for the Armed Forces and the wider society. The Nigerian Army University Bill is part of Nigerian Army's counter to the violent and the education ideology of the terrorists ravaging the North East region. The university is carefully and strategically seated in view to showcase the successes reported by the Armed Forces and encounter terrorism and counter insurgency operations. The university will reduce illiteracy, productively engage young persons, thereby reducing the pool of youth susceptible to radicalization and recruitment by the European group. Thus, the institution becomes the major front in Nigerian Army's hard and mild war in the North East with wider implications for the race of Nigeria and other crisis-ridden paths of the Sahel. Furthermore, it is positioned as a model for the civil-military cooperation relationship with its multi-layered and top-bottom interface between military and civilian establishments, ending at the bottom with a town and government relation in view. Distinguished senators, other invited stakeholders, the Nigerian Army University Bill is a very important document that will imbue the university with the statutory legal backing to operate as a federal government citadel of learning. The powers of all organs of the institution will be derived from this document. Let's eat. A very cornerstone upon which all have mission, mission and aspirations will be elected. This is why, this is why this public hearing is necessary, as a necessary legislative step that will lead to its passage. It is very, very important. The public and the press will first look into the uniqueness embedded in the design and operation of the Nigerian Army University Bill and the role and the vision for leading to its conceptualization. It is very hard to talk about this epochal moment without really appreciating the tireless efforts of these distinguished senators. The dedication and interest to this exercise symposiums are low for educational development. It is particularly interesting that you share this love with the President, Commander-in-Chief of the Armed Forces, President Muhammadu Buhari, who graciously granted the approval for the university on the eleventh of April, 2018, and followed through with a groundbreaking ceremony on the thirtieth of October, 2018, at the Pampun site. This unprecedented executive legislative relationship is the driving force of the Nigerian Army University and we can't but appreciate it almost. Let me reiterate at this point that the university is already living up to this meeting of becoming a true citadel of learning where every Nigerian has an equal opportunity of getting admission and pursuing any course of their choice as long as they meet the entry criteria. Statistics from our recent admission SSI is to find this commission and I want to pledge that this and many practices targeted at national operation will continue to succeed. Distinguished senators of the Ninth Assembly, invited guests, members of the press, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you most sincerely for coming and as you contribute to this debate, I wish you a very fruitful deliberation. Thank you and God bless. Good morning, distinguished Senator Chairman of this committee and other distinguished senators present. Good morning, Chief of Army Staff and our very dear colleague in the security force who has been able to make some of us leave with our eyes tray brought us close. Good morning, other members of stakeholders present here, professors. My name is Barista, this is Chris Akambe, a director in the Office of the Attorney General of the Federation who stays to Federal Ministry of Education at the legal address. I want to express the apologies of the Honorable Ministers of Education for their inability to be here this morning and I can assure you they would have loved to be here because this has been their baby from the records I have seen at inception. But they are honorably absent and I pray their apologies, that their apologies are accepted. Now, I want to also come to relate with the National Assembly on the passing away of a very erudite senator which I used to follow this incident. And I say may God grant his soul eternal rest and the National Assembly the fortitude to bear this loss. Now, because I was warned earlier that this should be a very short speech, I will follow all the other protocols while I go straight into what the Honorable Minister would want me to say in this bill, concerning this bill. Well, the background to this bill started as early as April 2018 when the Federal Executive Council gave a directive to the minister to make sure that he presents a new council with a draft bill to establish this Nigerian Army University. That was done. All protocols, all procedures were observed and an early bill was presented or had to be taken back into the kitchen again to make sure what comes out meets global standards and achieves the purpose for which it was named. And for this purpose, we collaborated very closely with the security forces that are just the Nigerian Army or mostly with the Nigerian Army and other security forces. And what we have today is a near-good bill, good-to-go. Why I'm saying near-good is because for lawyers, no-no is ever perfect. As it is now, as policymakers, the Federal Ministry of Education supports this bill fully. For two reasons, very many reasons for two stand out. Number one is granting us more access, access to get youths, to get the not-so-young, to get the not-too-old to learn, to have access to tertiary education which we mostly and which, if you look at the statistics, the universities in Nigeria are not nearly enough to cater for our population. Secondly, we want to classify this university as a special needs university because of the times we are in. The fact that its background feels to the army means that if we have our say and our way that issues of security, issues of taking responsibility for our own security, our own safety and our own knowing that our country must be and it must be, should be a general cause. So that by the time the university includes in one hundred level in the minds of every student, they need to take security seriously, to love the country, if I may say that, then we would have moved this country from a position of "I am myself" to "I am ourselves." And that is why the ministry is very happy that the university is taking off and is going to work closely with the university councils to ensure that courses are tailored in such a way that this kind of security to the situations that we have correctly. Unfortunately, this university is in the theater of this war that it is properly taken care of in the future. Now, I have had opportunity of just taking a brief skim through the bill and now I'm talking as a lawyer who is a draftsman. I can say that the objectives and risks of the bill, the purposes are properly seated but the only thing we will need to look at the end is the drafting. We'll probably, I would suggest, we suggest that we look at the drafts again. Some sections are put in places they should not be so it does not give fluency of reading and an apt meaning to what we want. And example is if you look at section twelve, I understand what section twelve is saying but the third party with that will not be able to make meaning. So because I had a very short time to look at the draft bill and really the indulgence of the Senate to allow me at the end of this to send in some suggestions on how to regig the draft in order to give it the meaning which I know the Army intends to give and also to bring it in line with other universities when it comes to regulation and administration just to avoid future ambiguities which can lead to litigations or unpleasant consequences. I want to express the appreciation of the Honorable Minister and the whole ministry including the Permanent Secretary on the opportunity for us to align ourselves for this bill and to make our presentation. And once again, I request and I said that we will send him our little detail comments on the draft. It has nothing to do with the substance. Thank you.
I see, I'm the Director, Public Affairs of the National University Commission here to represent the commission. I'm sure the Chairman, the Chief of Army Staff know that the Executive Secretary and the many staff. I fell apart of the country. They are together in Germany. They will be coming back on Sunday. So I bring presentations from him and from the National University Commission. And we, in the National University Commission, whenever we are invited to a stakeholders' meeting, for us, it is different from a public hearing because what we understand by stakeholders' meetings is a meeting where you would have minds on a document and that probably at the end of the day have a perfect, only a perfect document. Firstly, let me say that as the Chief of Army Staff said and the Chairman, the National University Commission considers this university positively Nobel unlike the Nobel Coronavirus. This is a positive Nobel and we are more excited than anybody in this country to see the success of this university because to us, it's the university where we are experimenting at the coming together of the military and the civilians. When you have a university that taking the best from the military and the best from the black civilians to produce the best for the country, that's not only the well but an experiment which you hope in the near future will prove to be a success. We have been, I'm sure the Chief of Army Staff and the Chairman will know that we have we've been supporting for this university from the one and we are extremely excited that it should succeed. The Chairman mentioned that we should give some approvals or accreditation to some programs in the university. You see, there's a difference between accreditation and approval. What we call approval is when you want to start a program, you will apply to us to start a program. Before now, we have been stopping universities from starting programs that we do not have the benchmark national academic standard. But now we have liberalized. If any university wants to start a new program that we do not have the curriculum, we have asked the university to produce the curriculum and give it to us and then we subject it to our processes which includes the, who sequester professors in the field from all over they want to look at the document and once it is satisfying good, then we will hold it up and then give them the approval to start the program and then any other university willing. Because when a curriculum is produced becomes our own document or the document of the university produces it, so I'm advising the Nigerian Army University to, you can start the program. So what we need to do is to talk to us. If we don't have the curriculum for that, you will pay and then produce the curriculum and give it to us and then we will finalize it and make sure that it meets our standards and then you are good to go. So I have the thanks to the Secretary's permission to let you know that you can start any program you want as long as you produce the curriculum rightly. Accreditation, we do when a program is matured. A program matures after three years. You can start a program but after three years, it's matured for us to come for accreditation. And when we do the accreditation, I'm sure everyone will give three statuses you either have full accreditation You either have full accreditation interim or denied. So before you graduate, your first step will come and look at what you are teaching, what you are giving them. If you find it sufficient, then we will give you approval to graduate them. Otherwise, we would either delay the graduation or distribute them to where we feel they will be given the necessary education they require to graduate. And I may add that, because Mr. Pascal Erwaga, our Director Legal, is somebody who has all the laws of all the universities that he had at his fingertips. So what he has done is to look at this draft law, and he has, I will not read the whole, but I would just like to know that he has given me 31 items that he feels should be amended or should be incorporated for this law to meet the standards of our law of our university. You see, the military may see it as a military establishment, but we are seeing it as a university. We have some specialized universities already. We have the NDA, we have the West Academy, we have the Afit, that Air Force Institute of Technology and Engineering, and we have a few other specialized universities. As far as we are concerned, the National Universities Commission, we look at the institution as a university. All the other things you do in the military that we feel is a problem. What we have for somebody is that it should be a university whose degree would be comparable to any in the world, whose graduates can move seamlessly anywhere, either internally or internationally, to pursue their post-graduates and other things. But you see, the chat we have for this university, because I remember that the Chief of Army Staff has been to the commission several of this university. His passion, as the Chairman said, is like God. But what we have been discussing here, because I have been bringing to all the meetings we have had with him in the National Universities Commission, is for them to start programs that will have the Nigerian Army innovative. We need to see innovations in the Nigerian Army. We need to see innovations in the country. And as I said, we are ready to let you go. So please do that. Don't, if you concentrate on programs that are available in all other universities, they are unlikely to get anywhere. Because if you are doing programs that are available from where I can leave to go, and from Bostasala, you are not absolutely. And you are not likely to make impact. And we are so happy that when you wanted to the Bostasala, you chose somebody who is not only a friend to the National Universities Commission, not only a comrade, but somebody very serious. We're seeing in NUC as somebody who, one of the few Bostaslers in this country who will move seamlessly between ASU, Ministry of Education, and NUC. A first call that they have to give us. So, Mr. Chairman, you have signaled that we shouldn't take a long time. But obviously, one or two, so that you get an idea of what we have here. He said, number one, the draft should provide a table of contents to give a holistic presentation of the structure of the bill. The document should be presented. And he went on the lead S1, Section 3 of Section A and E, for being superfluous, and objectives of the university in S3, already captured issues stated here. So he went on up to 30, up to 31. So we did not present this, because we thought we were going to be discussing them item by item. But it appears that's not going to happen. So what we will do is, Pascal, I mean, put it in there. I think you must understand that, yeah, I understand that, and then we send other, they go, okay, you have 20. But you just can't give it to the Chairman. I'm going to, as I said, look at this critically, and as much as possible, try to incorporate everything itself. But this is taken from what is existing in all the universities. If the university has some aspects of it, so that are not compatible. I'm sure he also read the autonomy bill very well, incorporated. Because I know you've been having a problem or a clash with what the Ministry of Education is going to want and what a typical university should have. So we advise that you should have a law that will have what the typical university should have. Because for you to attract, like Sirus Aram, for you to attract the best brains around, you must be seen to be in conformity with what obtains in the sector. So, Mr. Chairman, I, once again, brings the good men of the National Universities Commission and the Executive Secretary, who are standing there, who would have loved him, he had been here himself. He would have spoken here for an hour because of his passion for this university. So I will give these documents, sir, and I hope that this bill will see the light of the day very soon. And as the Chairman said, we had, for us in the National Universities Commission, this happened not too long ago, that we will have the universities under the law in full. The term in the university was to partner with the others. The Anshab will resume the program. After many universities, we will have, Pascal, that we have, yeah, in what's at 20, almost 23 years, or without those, are not as serious as normally. So we, in front of the Senate, to make sure that this university owing to its peculiar nature, has its law passed as soon as possible. Very important, because if you don't have the law, a lot of things happen. And since you are going to have a lot of experience within, you will better to be having some court cases, you will be having some litigation. So it's very important that you have the law, so that everyone knows where he or she stands when they come to the university, at Nigerian Army University. So I wish to once more thank you most sincerely for this opportunity. And we are here, why we are still here. If any aspect of what we have to admit that needs to be elaborated, I'm sure our legal junior, Mr. Pascal Erwaga, will do that very well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Bostasala Nigerian University, you. Distinguished Senator Adim Dumey, and distinguished senators, I stand on the existing protocol. Let me join Senator Adim Dumey, Senator Representative Bonner South, the Chief of Army Staff, and this First Staff Officer, he are present. Members of Council of Nigerian University U, members of management, to make a few commitments. One, that we stand by everything. The distinguished Senator Adim Dumey, the Chief of Army Staff, the Federal Minister of Education, and the NUC have said. Two, as a university, we promise both Nigerian Army, the people of Nigeria, a very efficient, modern university, that both the Army, the Armed Forces, and the Nigerian Army. This university shall be focused. We shall work closely with our regulatory agencies, particularly the NUC. We shall abide by the benchmark minimum academic standards. We shall use all the quality assurance tools. And while we work closely with all existing Nigerian universities, we pledge that in the not-too-distant future, which is the period of, let's say, five, six years, we shall not only compete, but we shall be among the top five universities in this country.
Good morning. Order, distinguished senators, Chief of Army Staff, the Vice Chancellor of Nigerian University U, and the University Bureau. I am delighted to be here today, because I was involved in the preparation of the academic brief for this university. And the dream of the university made it a completely special one, to put the Nigerian Army in line with the 21st century requirements of security worldwide. And to allow for continuous professional development of sovereign officers in the Nigerian Army, which are things that are not there and present. And that university will provide this. There are a number of specialized courses that were envisaged, for which NUC claiming doesn't have a minimum standard right now. But with the new directions from the NUC, in Nigerian Army University, we will be able to start these courses and get professionals from all over the world to help develop curriculum that will be internationally acceptable. Another dream, which I pray comes true pretty soon, is the fact that this university is supposed to be creative and innovative, in the sense of weaponry development and a lot of other things that the Nigerian Army will need. You will agree with me that a nation cannot depend on other nations for its own security and expect that security to be tight. So homegrown research, development, and creativity will take place in this university. On the other hand, one thing that saddens my heart is that admission specifications for the university are slightly modified to allow sovereign officers who wish to upgrade their skills to be able to come in through some limitation, which some normal universities may not really permit. So there will be mixture of sovereign officers and civilians. I'm sure this will be a center of excellence, not only for Nigeria, but for Africa as a whole.
Major General Hunter was spoken to. I'm currently a student of Nazaral State University, but I was part and parcel of the plan for this university. I have a passion for this university. I share the Chief of Army Staff vision. I appreciate, you know, the attachment NUC has given to the development of this university. And we also want to thank the Federal Ministry of Education for the role the minister personally plays in obtaining the federal executive approval. But most importantly, I just want to draw attention to three main things. One is the vision of the university, which the previous thing has mentioned. I already thought, to become a solution center in technology, research, and development, for the promotion of self-reliance, creativity, and innovation in addressing the challenges of the Nigerian Army, the military, and the nation. I think this encapsulates every thing that you want from that university. The second one is the monetary effect of development. If you've traveled from Gombe to Gueye, the first time I traveled from Gombe to Gueye and went to Kayakusa, the distance between Kayakusa and Gueye is 41 kilometers. It took us four and a half hours to do a distance of 41 kilometers. The first person that came to my mind, is this part of Nigeria? If it is part of Nigeria, I mean, what do we have to show before there that they are Nigerians? So this university will have a monetary effect on development, not just in Gueye, but on all the approaches, you know, to Gueye itself. The third one is to mention that it is not just Nigeria that has a military university. In trying to plan and establish this university, we visited about seven countries and about 13 universities in Nigeria. One of the universities we visited is in China, the National Defense University Technology. It's a several-star university. Six million candidates compete for 6,000 places in that university period. It is in charge of their space program. They are in charge of their, all this 7G, 5G, they are in charge of research. Those are the things. And if you follow the trend of development in the Nigerian Army in the last five, six years, you realize that they have, I demand improvement in quality, they must be more of cerebral activity. And I think that's what the Chief of Army Staff wanted to do to that development. So I want to say, I thank all of you here. I want to ask you that the bill has been passed. And I want to wish the Chief of Army Staff the very best about this university. Thank you, and God bless you.
Elise University, there is a need to consider having campuses in the other geopolitical zone. I think my distinguished colleagues, my distinguished colleague have, you know, critically presented the case of having that campuses in various geopolitical zones. And you can see, she's the one and only member, female member of our committee. You want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, just to support what the Chairman has said, this is a very specialized university and first of its kind in Nigeria. And crime has no color, crime has no religion. Crime is crime, anywhere you can see crime, it is crime. Therefore, we suggested that we need to have campuses in every zone. And we have six geopolitical zones in this country. And we're going to have campus in every geopolitical zone. Then we have an epicenter in Boronu State, where this university is already cited. And it's a very noble idea, because other committee members supported that. And by the time we have this specialized school in every zone, that will help us to not just technological advancement, also help us to reduce the crime rate in that. And it will also unify this country, based on Nigerian constitution that talks about unity and all of that. This will unify the country. It will bring development to the country. It will also spread the issue of combating crime in Nigeria to all the zones of the country. So it's a noble idea.
Concerning the admission issue.
The admission, oh, I've said it several times. You can take the record of the university for the past two years. You have met with one, they are moving to Part II now. This is their second year, and we have the recent admission. If you look at the admission, about 80% of the students so far admitted and registered are from other geopolitical zones or states. So this is a unique university, even in the admission. Because you know, other universities in the country, especially the federal government's universities, are set in what they call the catchment areas, specified catchment areas. This is not the case, there is no issue of state of origin once you are Nigerian, and they need the admission requirement to be admitted. I have my colleagues here too, Colin, Chief, and others that will make a comment. But you can see, the Chairman has said, there's no, there's no point all of us making comments.
Go ahead. The issue of Nigerian Defense University and Nigerian...
No, Nigerian Defense Academy.
Oh, it's a university.
No, it's a university, but civilians are not admitted in Nigerian Defense Academy and other institutions of Army that are available, except for Nigerian Defense, Nigerian War College, they do that admission, but not at the lower level. But this is the only university that you go in there either as a civilian, or as a soldier, or any, any Nigerian that wants to further his education in a specialized field can be admitted. So it's a unique one, not like, I think people are confusing with NDA. For NDA, you must be a soldier before you go in there, then you graduate as Nigerian Army, Nigerian Air Force, or Navy. But for the Nigerian university, you don't have to be a soldier, or you can go in and come out as a civilian. And soldiers that are in there can come in and to further their studies, especially those ones that are other ranks, or those officers that even want to study specialized fields. So it's different. Thank you very much.